Okay.
Never know, like my work.
Cause normally I couldn't ask you, but I might never.
Do you want me to run outside and get it?
We can look when we get out.
I don't want to.
Well, if you need my phone, can I make my phone?
Alright, we're ready to roll, let's get out.
Thank you. Alright, good afternoon and welcome to the March seventh, two thousand eighteen school board meeting. We already in process, we just finished our non-public. And this is just an abbreviated, uh, school board meeting so we can get everybody on the road and safe and get home. So, um, I'd like to start with, we just came on a non-public and I'd like to make a motion to seal the minutes from our non-public meeting.
A second.
Start the discussion. None others in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, o, abstain, four zero zero. Alright, the only thing on our agenda is Mr. Leckleiter, so we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just wanted to follow up, uh, from our last meeting, uh, regarding LMS scheduling. And, um, so I've submitted some additional information related to scheduling, um, for, uh, next year responding to, uh, the enrollment numbers and, um, the two reductions at the middle school. So, um, I want to introduce Martha Thayer here, Martha's our assistant principal. I mentioned last time Martha does a lot of the, uh, nitty gritty of the scheduling, uh, when it comes to individual student schedules. But Martha also has done a lot, um, in the research and the work that has, uh, brought us to this point. A lot of the information I presented last time and some of the additional information for our, uh, meeting today. So, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Martha in a minute to just talk about a few things. But in terms of, uh, what you have is first the introduction is, um, we wanted to provide some additional information on the ELA content, um, that we talked about last time. Uh, there were some questions that came out and I think, uh, in some cases, uh, it was, um, it maybe wasn't presented in a, in a, in a style that was, um, maybe real clear, um, in terms of what it would look like for a student. If, uh, if we go with that option, so, uh, we wanted to present some, um, maybe some clarity to that. And then, um, some other information. So, as I, as I mentioned last time, um, we are looking at the class sizes and, um, we're looking at right now in, uh, current grade five, we have eighty students. And in our, uh, incoming grade five for next year, we have currently eighty-seven students projected at ninety. So whether we, you know, right now that's eighty-seven. We currently have five content teachers, um, in grade five and five content teachers in, uh, grade six. If we make the reduction at grade five and six, we are looking at, um, doing some restructuring in both of those grades with our content teachers. It's important to understand, I think, first that when we're talking about grades five and six versus seven, eight, there is a difference. Difference in terms of, um, certifications and in terms of when we look at teacher assignments, we have to be very cognizant of, uh, what the teacher certifications are. And, uh, for example, if they teach an eighth grade math class, they have to be certified in math. Now, math is a critical shortage area, so sometimes we can all, alt-certify, alternative certify. But grade five and six are considered elementary grades, so, uh, a candidate or a teacher with a, uh, elementary certification, either grades K through six or K through eight, um, is then certified to teach any subject area in those grades. Now, our model in grade five, as I mentioned, um, is the same at grade six with a content specialist model. So, the professional development, the work that we do with curriculum is, uh, very intensive and depthy in those content areas. With the restructuring in both of those grades, what we're presenting is, um, a model where, and, uh, and again, this might have been a little, little confusing last time, where the students continue to receive ninety minutes of ELA instruction every day. Where the current class size in grade five, next year, grade six, uh, the average is sixteen to seventeen to one. And in the four coming up to grade five, the average, if it's ninety, is right around eighteen, so it's in that seventeen, eighteen range. The actual assignments for the teachers would change a little bit. We'd be reducing to four, a four-member team there. And in doing so, we would be restructuring how we deliver the services to those content areas. For math, science, and social studies with the model that is the first page there, um, it's very similar in terms of the content instruction. With ELA, the students continue to get ninety minutes a day. The ELA teacher, um, is teaching forty-five minutes of ELA. And then all four teachers are also teaching ELA for forty-five minutes. So, as a student, and I put the student schedule on here because that, that might have been unclear, um, on page three in our document, the sample student schedule, um, a student would have a math, science, and social studies class. They would still have two ELA classes, um, and then two UAs. Now, the second UA cla- the second ELA class would be ELA content, alright? And however we term that, I think it's important to understand that first and foremost, it is an ELA class. We've gone, we've used this model before, if you remember, Ms. Lacarose was our curriculum director for several years. We did a lot of research across the district around configurations and planning at that point in time. At that time, when we went to this model, um, we were actually way out in front of, um, a lot of the research, uh, though there was research done out there. There's been much more research done since then to support the model. I'm gonna let Martha talk a little bit about her experiences. She's not only been in the district many years, but Martha taught ELA, she was, she's a reading specialist, she has certifications in that. And then, of course, now she's, um, our assistant principal. She taught in the model and, um, was also on the committees that worked to develop, uh, that course. So, I'll turn it over to Martha to talk a little bit about, about that.
Okay, so, um, I've been in the district for a number of years and I've taught, uh, fifth grade and self-contained. I've taught, um, English, Language Arts, and reading in grade seven and eight, and then was the reading specialist and now the assistant principal. We did have an occasion, um, about eight years ago, maybe a little bit longer than that, where we, um, due to, um, enrollment that was, that had gone up, we had to come up with four different teams within the, within the building, actually five. We had a fifth grade team, a sixth grade team, then we had high enrollment in grade seven and eight. So, we had a seventh grade team, a combination seventh and eighth grade team, and an eighth grade team. We all taught, um, what we called then, reading in the content area. And we, we taught it based on the content with which we taught. So, I was the, um, the ELA teacher, so I taught reading in the content area of English, Language Arts. But my peers taught reading in the content area of social studies, math, um, and science. It was a, it was a completely separate course. It was not an extension of science, social studies, or math. They were, it was taught individually, we had separate curriculum materials, and we taught a lot of the basics that you need to go along with that. I was also part of the, um, um, curriculum committee, um, when we had to rewrite curriculum for our district. The current curriculum that we use, it's been revamped a little bit for the competencies. But part of that, what we did even back in that day, and if, if it's okay with you, I wanna just read some of the philosophy that we followed back then, that came from national standards that we use in our, our current, um, even state and now into our local. Says that reading is critical to building knowledge in history, social studies, as well as in science and technical subjects. College and career-ready reading in these fields requires an appreciation of the norms and conventions of each discipline, such as the kinds of evidence used in history and science, and understanding of domain-specific words and phrases, and attention to precise detail, and the capacity to evaluate intricate arguments, synthesize complex information, and follow detailed descriptions of events and concepts. In history and social studies, for example, students need to be able to analyze, evaluate, and differentiate primary and secondary sources. When reading scientific and technical texts, students need to be able to gain knowledge from challenging texts that often make extensive use of elaborate diagrams and data to convey information and illustrate concepts. Students must be able to read complex informational texts in these fields with independence and confidence because the vast majority of reading in college and workforce training programs will be sophisticated nonfiction. So, that was kind of, um, part of the backbone or, of how we looked at that when we devised curriculum and worked in that, um, on those different, um, areas within that. They were separate, they were graded based on reading tech, um, techniques and strategies that are specific to each, um, subject area. And what we realized by implementing that kind of a program was that, um, we had seen some deficiencies, shortfalls in, um, our scores with regard to informational reading. And as a result of participating in that kind of a program, we saw some, we saw, um, results increase. Yes?
I just have a question I've been thinking about. Could you tell me what that would look like in math? Like an example?
Sure, sure.
Of what that would look like in math?
So, first of all, they would really tackle some of the complex, um, vocabulary that, that, that students, um, have to look at in math. There's a lot of multiple meaning, um, uh, products. Product, for example, is the result of a multiplication problem, but a product is also something you can buy at a store. So, there are many examples of vocabulary that can present, um, difficulties for students, um, in, in math, and they need to have a solid foundation of that. Also, it has been, um, shown time and again that when you write and really write out about what you're doing in math, writing to explain math, you really are able to, um, gain a deeper understanding. It's a good example of expository writing because you're having to write step by step, and if you miss one, then you're not gonna, um, be able to do what's correct. I do know that the teacher that, um, who was on my team, um, and we taught seventh and eighth grade at that time, um, did use, um, stock market information, had students read about different things, had to engage in what would happen if they, um, were involved in that, look at the different percentages and the, and the rises and falls, and be able to write in to speak and convey that information. So, that's an example of what could be done with math. There are many examples that could be done, but that's one of them.
How does this align with the curriculum that we already have in place?
Um, actually.
Or the resources that we already have?
The resources that we have in place? Um, currently, um, we have, uh, in fifth grade, we have journeys, but we also have news, newsella, news ELA. I don't know if you're familiar with that or not, it's an online program that they update every day with current events and, and other, um, areas that you can go into that are nonfiction. So, fifth grade would have that along with it, journeys, which has some, um, informational text in it. Studiesync has more. Studiesync also has something that they call blasts. It's, again, something similar to newsella, where they come up, where they, um, give you different, um, informational stories. Some of them current events, some of them things that have happened in the past, might be related to a topic around Mount Luther King Day. They might have a lot of, um, it, um, issues of what they call blasts, articles on things that, um, for that topic. And so, that you're able to use those kinds of, um, informational articles. We also, there's a, there's a number of different areas. We have Kids Discover, um, a lot of different publications that, some of them we already have in our building. We can tap into the, all that, um, the information we have through Studiesync to get those informational articles, um, across content areas that, that teachers could use.
One, one of the things that I found interesting, um, since our last meeting, um, they've, uh, they've released a lot of the sample items for the new state test in New Hampshire. And, um, and so, teachers are probably getting tired of me emailing them samples, but, um, I think it informs where you wanna end up with kids. We don't wanna teach to the test, but, uh, these samples are based on the expectations in ELA and, and, um, the state standards, uh, which Martha shared. And in, in looking at those, I cou- I couldn't believe, they break them into, for ELA, either informational or opinion argument. There's no narrative, no description, it's either informational argument. So, when these kids take the state test in two months, or a month, um, they're gonna be required to develop writing pieces on either information or arguments. And I provided some examples, um, you know, just one, for example, for those watching. Write a two or three-page paragraph, explanation about exploring caves. Your explanation must be based on these ideas, concepts, and information that can be determined through analysis of the cage, caves passage. They give them a passage about caves, it's a nonfiction text. They have another one about animal camouflage, uh, so, i- it goes on and on. Examples, every single one of them. One of them was multicultural cooking, Latin America and chili. So, the, it runs the whole gamut, but, uh, it was very interesting that that's, the nature of these are in those areas. Explain for your local newspaper about the mud wasp, the bee, and the common housefly. Your explanation must be based on ideas, concepts, and information that can be, uh, determined through analysis of the passages that they give the students. So, I think that's exactly the type of work that is really important, um, in that context. And when you think about college and career readiness, no matter what career our students end up with, they're not gonna spend forty-five minutes doing writing completely separate from the nature of their work. You're, you're, when you're in a career, you're doing technical writing as an engineer, you're doing writing, uh, literacy is, is weave throughout your, your, your work, so, um.
Makes me sad that we're, they're not even testing the narrative piece because that's
They do, they, well, they do, um, some of the literature, they do, uh, comprehension. But when it comes to the writing, i- it, it is all, and a lot of the text is informational, opinion, um, nonfiction-based, so.
So, I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around the, how the split works. So, it would be content literacy, so that would be reading and answering questions and exploring text.
In that subject area. For fifteen minutes today?
Forty-five, forty-five.
Forty-five.
They would, is it, they would rotate each quarter to, like, so you would have math literacy one quarter, and then you have science literacy one quarter.
Oh, so what if you during, okay.
Right, right, it'd be a separate class.
Alright.
It's three sentences, two forty-fives.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that makes, that makes sense, um, but all the mechanics and language and grammar, that would be taught by the ELA specialist.
Yep.
But carried through.
Okay.
And we have had professional development before.
I know, it can't, you know, you don't separate it completely.
We've had, actually had someone come in and present us with, um, professional development with the write, reading and writing across the, the content areas, and really shows how to tie you, they're gonna have to tie in.
Yeah.
The, um, the mechanics and all that, even, it should ca- it should carry through anyway.
Yeah.
And teachers always, in science or social studies, will say, they, they don't capitalize it, so they're already looking for that.
Right, right, okay, that makes sense.
Well. Oh, I don't wanna jump ahead to seventh grade.
So, um, so you've made the decision, um, that the united, unified arts programs are more important than a fifth teacher?
I don't think that we've.
From fifth grade and sixth grade.
I don't think that we've, um, we think that that's more important. I think that we think, that we've seen and we've, um, seen success with, um, using the teachers who teach in the content area to be able to teach literacy in their content areas. I think that's what we're looking at, we're not looking at, is a decision that we're not going to reduce in a unified arts. I mean, that's gonna come, right now.
I guess, I, I guess my question on this was, I, I'll use the fifth grade. You have a semester, uh, from using a semester for library. So, that's, that's a, that's a full position, equivalent of a full position. And the, uh, conversation we had with Tom last time was that, if we could, didn't have to make a change, we wouldn't make a change. But, but we knew we had to make a change. So, then it became whether or not regular content is more important than unified art content. And I think the board was, uh, thought regular content would take precedent over unified art content, or unified art programs. But, but now you're, you're going back to really, uh, the program that you guys were using three or four years ago, where you're going to, um, uh, rotate the students through whether it be math and science and social studies, then, then reading and writing, as a ELA contact for, for a quarter. And, and you're, you're comfortable that that's still a better, a better process than making tough decisions in unified arts and making sure you had five teachers in your regular content areas. So, I, I'm just, I, I, I guess I'm pushing whether or not you thought this all the way through. I mean, it's, it's hard decisions either way, either way you go. And, and one may be easier than the other, um, because in, in, in one, I think the decision's pretty much been, been made on, as far as with the regular content, the changes that been made to the budgets and stuff like that. So, it's already been, sort of been pushed through that process. But it's still an opportunity behind closed doors for the administration to have those conversations, to determine what exactly is the best process for the kids. For the kids. What's the best thing for the kids? Irrelevant of the content or the unified art programs. And, um, that should be the driving force behind the decisions that inevitably, uh, need to be made fairly quickly because other decisions the school board has to make have to be made also relatively quickly. Um, in that, so.
I, I feel better about this plan than I did last time, and I think it was just that I was missing some of the
The forty-five minutes?
The big picture. Yes, I was under the impression that it was going to be, like you said, fifteen minutes tacked on to the end of math. Um, and not its own block of, of, of reading and, you know, ELA content. So, I, I do feel confident about, about this play, this going forward. I do, especially with the sixth grade. Like, I see it as a, I see it, it very, working very well with the teachers that we have on that team, and it's very convenient that, you know, that's, that's, you know, that's such a low, a small class size. My, I still do have concerns about losing a teacher in fifth grade because, because of the makeup of that class and that we're, you know, we're, we're right at ninety right now, um.
Eighty-seven.
Is it eighty-seven? Um, and I also know that's a high-needs class and, you know, could benefit from that added support and structure and, you know. Plus, the curriculum for fifth grade is the same as they've had for third, for, you know, for second, third, fourth, and fifth. And then it changes at sixth grade. So, to keep that, the same amount of, I don't know, I th- I think it makes more sense in sixth grade. Still, still on the fence about fifth grade.
It changes in fifth grade, right now. It changes in fifth grade right now.
Well, no, the, the resources that they have are the same in fifth grade as, it's K through five that we have for reading and, and math and everything, and then everything else is six through eight.
To John's point, what he was talking about as far as the elimination of UAs, then what happens, John, is your class size becomes too small. And I think you're better off having a class size that's a little bit bigger and still have UAs. Cause then you're going down to like fifteen, sixteen.
No, I, I, I'm, I'm hearing you. I, I do, I do under, I do under, I do understand that, but, um.
It's like, what's the worst of them being two evils? It's like, you know, a little bigger of a class size.
You know, for, for, well, for somebody who is, um, not gonna follow music, but needs to have a semester of music, or I don't even, I don't even understand the semester of library in the middle school anymore because we supposedly have them fully ingrained in that process coming out of GMS. And we totally have revamped the, the library experience at LMS, so I don't even know why that class is, is there.
At LMS? Oh, she's a rock star.
I under- I understand, but I, but I understand that.
But she's not a lecturer, she doesn't need to teach a class.
Yeah.
But I, she doesn't need, I'm not, I'm not, but I don't know why it's there because
What she teaches.
It's not a library class anymore. It's, it's something that should be, being brought into the, to the thing, so. Um, so, um, uh, and I know, Robin, you probably disagree with me, but
No, no, no.
We had many arguments about the whole change in the process for the libraries so that these things, these changes could occur based on what we knew was coming. But it, it didn't change. You, you, you kept it on, on your program of studies.
What do you teach in libraries?
Let, let me just, in turn, let me just mention UAs in general. So, to your point earlier, John, about looking at the whole thing and, and how this has been analyzed. We've looked at every, every angle of our schedule and, and we have looked at UAs. And I'm not blind to the fact that UAs will be impacted as we continue down the path of declining enrollment. So, I, I completely understand where you're coming from with that. Now, to library, uh, library right now, she teaches two classes first semester and three classes second semester, so the, the five. We would love to either reduce that or eliminate that because her role has changed with the learning commons. When we do that, now those kids, for that UA rotation, go to another, we, those kids have to go somewhere for their UA. So, what that does then is it increases the class sizes of the other UAs. So, we can solve both problems by eliminating the need, we absolutely agree. For three periods a day right now, for all intents and purposes, our library is closed because she's teaching a class. Now, she's very flexible and she does do a lot of things all at once, multitask. But, um, when you have a class of kids in the library, it's hard to keep it fully open, or even to have another class, a social studies, science, or another class come in and use the library. So, that's something we want to do, that's something that we're gonna look at, is how can we either reduce or eliminate that library UA so that that can then be absorbed by the other UAs? So, that is something we're looking at, and I, and it, it's absolutely something we feel is, is, is important.
But I think the, I think the class size for UAs, um, couldn't get in trouble with Robin again.
No, not.
Um, can be a little bit higher than the twenty-five students, it could be thirty students.
Depends, because there are.
Look, the ba- the, there's no argument here, the band program can do it with forty-seven kids.
The fax, there are certain classes you can't go above twenty-four by state regulation.
Okay, so, let's go through this. Physical education, can't go above twenty-four students?
You can, you can. Fax is the one you can't, and sciences you can't.
Family and consumer science, you can't go above twenty-four students?
No, cause they have
No, not toasters.
They have a lab setting in there.
They have to have. It's state, state minimum standards. They have electricity. Anything with, um, any kind of like equipment, tech ed, wasn't able to go above that. Tommy would burn the place down on attendance.
But that is, those areas where we can are areas where by not having the library class, we can go in that direction as, as we look at, you know, reducing her role as a, as a, a teacher and increasing her role.
Sometimes, sometimes it's real quick, you just, you just gotta make the decision. And then you, then you figure it out.
Well, her role, role changes.
It has.
Because in the learning commons model, it's, it's a different.
It has changed, yeah. There's no, there's no doubt that the model, and it's the model that we want.
And we want, we want, even in cases like ELA classes, we want them coming into the library. We want science, social studies classes going into the library and accessing all of, uh, the resources in there, so, um, absolutely. And then the other piece to the UAs is, um, there are minimum standard requirements around the UAs. You know, i- in our programming, we offer the minimums, the minimum standard document lists each one of those UAs in it. So, um, I think, as we look down the road here, I think there could be some conversations K to twelve around UAs. Those teachers are certified to teach any grade. So, when we look at elementary, middle, or middle, high school and the, the cross-b buildings, that, that becomes a more complicated deci- you know, conversation around scheduling with two different schools. But this year, for example,
Well, you have a test.
We did that with, yeah, we did that with, uh, with music.
With music?
Yeah, so.
Well, it, it, I mean, I do, I, I do agree with, with Tina. It's, it's better to understand.
Yeah.
And I, and I, and I, and I, I believe that, uh, well, two of you, hopefully three of you, will have quite the challenge with the next administration as you work through this problem, but, um.
Thank you.
So, we were going towards the learning commons. And let's say that L- So we were going towards the Learning Commons. And let's say that LMS is gonna be equipped, every student with a a Chromebook next year.
Yep.
And I ask this question about the the high school, and I'll ask about middle school. What is the purpose of the library for the Learning Common? I realize it's it's shifting towards the Learning Common, but I I visualize it as as an area where they're gonna go in with the Chromebooks, it's more like a quiet time and and where you can bring a class in there, but not utilize as a library.
So the old library model.
I don't understand the need for a librarian.
Okay, so um what's become very popular is um where they now call these these roles in a Learning Commons, a library media specialist or a Learning Commons specialist, they become more of an integrator than they do a library teacher, um or standing behind a circulation desk so kids can check the library books out. Um, that truly becomes the central place of learning in the building. And what's that?
Learning what?
Collaborating, working together on projects. So we just, we just put in a collabora, collaborative screen last week. Today, they were using that in the library. Um, they're working on a, today they were working on a, I tweeted it out, they're working on a project. Um, it was with Amy. It wasn't a another class coming in today, but it was with one of her classes. And um, you know, so they're working together to brainstorm different lists. It's then gonna end up with a project that they're doing some research on. So um it's a place where there's, it's busy, there's a lot going on. There may be kids working independently. There may be kids working on a Chromebook in isolation. We have a green room. They might be recording in the green room. They might be, um, I mean, our maker space is still developing, but they might be working. So it's really, it's coming up with essential questions that they can then work through, and you're not giving them the, the, the answers may not be one or the other. They may have to, through some inquiry, um.
So is it more independent study?
It's less of a study place now. Like, I was.
Not study, not study.
Well, I was in there.
So to answer, I think, Brian, to answer your question in terms of what is the librarian's role in that model?
Right.
Is she becomes either an integrator where she can actually go out of the library at times to classrooms, but more so, they come to the library and she's able to facilitate with the teacher, they team together, she's the specialist of the space and all the technology and everything that's in there, and she becomes really working collaboratively um with the teachers.
So she's pulling resources and making suggestions, we could use this program, and you could have your kids do this instead.
And working with another teacher who is saying this is the program we wanna work on, the process.
Right, the, yeah, this is the project that we're work, this is what we're talking about in school right now, in class right now, so.
I I see the the.
Do you need a librarian to do that?
It's not a librarian.
Do you need the common, Learning Common person to do that?
You do. It's a big job.
I need a new specialist, the new librarian.
It's a big job. We went to, uh, Amy and I went, because we've been working with Plymouth State now for months on this thing. Um, we went over to S- Southern Hampshire University, and they showed us their model and their specialist there. Now, obviously, it's a different age and everything. Um, but it was very interesting listening to their role, how it's changed over over the years. It it's changed drastically.
Yeah, I was actually, I spent the day, not, I didn't mean to spend the day in the Learning Commons, but I ended up, I was working on some articles, so I thought, oh, I'll just sit down in the library, it'll be nice and quiet.
No.
Uh, no, no, it wasn't. But there was a lot going on. Amy had classes coming in, but she also had, um, you know, people, specialists were pulling students out of classes and working with them in in Learning Commons. Kids were popping in saying, hey, you know, I just wanted to look this up, and she would, you know, go and help them. So it's a busy place. It's not a quiet, uh, we need that too. I think we we also need a space where kids can go and study and re- do research. Um, but it's not, it's it's completely different from a library. And it's not about checking out books and finding resources and borrowing them. You know, it's it's very, it's a creative collaborative kind of space. Yeah.
We we, Brian, did you go up to Conquer to that new elementary school?
No, I'm not.
Oh, you didn't?
I didn't go.
No, I didn't think you did.
Oh, that's.
When we went up there, that whole school is is designed around the Commons model. So they have a Learning Commons, which is a library, but they also have Commons model. They just have space where kids can come together and collaborate together in groups, and the teachers can meet them in those groups. What I took out of that is it's it's more of a model that's driving us away from the sit-and-get kind of a model, the kind of model where kids line up in rows, to a model where kids are coming together in collaborative work groups, where wo- work's being done, where, you know, those critical questions are being asked, and it's it's more facilitating that. So what's the role of the librarian? To me, in a great many ways, a role of librarian is to be extremely facile with technology, but also to be able to facilitate different learning groups coming together and different learning groups being able to collaborate and get in information. And then, when they don't know where to turn, not to tell them, but to ask the questions that makes the kids then come better at understanding where they have to turn to give. And 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 Conquer that grade school, i- i- if you have a chance, it was really an eye-opener for me, because I hadn't been to a building design like that, not just for looking at a modern grade school, which is an eye-opener, but also looking at a building that was completely designed around a Commons model. It it's really a neat take, and and they're very open to it. The business manager up there will get us in. It'd be worth taking a trip up there if you really wanna build a better understanding of of um building designs around that.
Yeah.
To to piggyback kind of off what you were saying, Jim, is I I was able to visit that school, and it was amazing. They had, like, like Jim said, the central, the middle of the school, the whole core of the school is open space. And and there are setups for a, you know, a whiteboard, a collaboration board, there are setups for kids to sit and do presentations to other classmates. Um, they also, their book, their library, is called the Book Room, and kids can go in there and look at resources and check out books, but it's not the focus of their their Learning Commons. And, you know, basically, what I took from it was twentieth-century learning is less about consuming. Like, when we were, when we were in school, we sat and listened and, you know, we were taught. Now, it's about creating, and the kids are are, the way we're, the way we're educating kids is by having them explore and cora- collaborate and create. Instead of consuming information, they're creating it and working together. So it's, you know, it just facilitates that that frame of mind instead of more.
They're almost creating it and feeding it back to the teacher in the classroom to show that they've, instead of doing it through homework, they're doing it through in a a project or.
Right.
There you go.
And they're and they're showing actually that, not a test or something, but that they can take it and move it all around and give it back to you as something totally different.
Right, about the application of what the, what they know and not just the facts.
That's competencies right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Showing mastery of a subject.
There may not be a right or wrong. It's really, like Sir Neil was saying, it's inquiry-based.
Yeah, yeah.
Process, yeah.
Yeah.
I love the, someone used the word application, the analysis. It's not those lower-order thinking skills.
Right.
It's more the analysis to creativity orders, the higher-order thinking skills. And also, I think, and I'm, you, no, I I haven't been in the private sector except as a a role as a, as a broker. But it also reminds me, I'm taught that in the private sector, there's so much that's dependent upon bringing together people, having them collaborate, having them give big capacity to create new knowledge, to use new knowledge, and not, in a, in a private sector, you don't have people sitting in a room and somebody telling you what to do. And so I think some of it reflects what I think a lot of us educators believe is is the world that our children are going to be entering into when they get out of public schools or colleges.
How to work with others, how to respect others. That's a life skill right there.
Absolutely.
Not always gonna like your boss.
The nineteen-nineties, I think it was a SCANS competencies that came out, and they were work-ready competencies, and, I mean, the technology's changed, the people haven't, you know?
Interesting.
I have a question. We keep, I keep hearing about this upcoming grade has a high special ed concentration. Are they bringing a special ed teacher up with them? Is that caseload on that fifth-grade teacher gonna quadruple? That's what I keep thinking about. Isn't it twenty-four percent? Twenty-eight percent of that incoming fifth-grade class has?
Is identified?
Is identified?
So, well, go ahead.
I'm just curious.
I haven't heard yet. Um, I usually reach out to the um, the elementary school. We 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 know the numbers. I haven't um gotten any information on the actual um.
Sorry, surprise.
Details. Well, I knew, I knew that. Um, we have in the past, um, split up, um, some of the kids, um, when we can. Um, at at least try to keep a small group if we can, who may have some of common needs so that they can be addressed effectively in the core classes that we offer at the middle school. So we have done that in the past. Um, I will be looking into that very soon as I start looking at our scheduling for next year.
Because you do it by grade now, clusters by grade, yeah.
But we do share sometimes.
Okay, I was just.
Some of those students will be in the um S-three program.
Okay.
Which is a separate program for more intensive needs.
These are things I worry about.
Um, and then some of those, as as you guys know, depending on how IEPs are are finalized this spring, sometimes they require individual or shared support.
And sometimes they might have an IEP, but um they need very little. So all that plays into how we, into placement at at the middle school and how we manage that.
Okay, thank you.
I just, you know, we're going to hopefully be tomorrow at noon time, and we're going to be going over some of those questions. But one of the reasons that Tom um had to present tonight is because, you know, one of the issues we have to deal with is exactly where are we going to be um reducing two positions in the middle school. Uh, the elementary school's quite straightforward because we know we have a cohort that doesn't need the extra teachers, so we can reduce one. The middle school, um, this conversation tonight would lead the superintendent to believe um that the uh middle school recommendation, and I think the board's going along with this, is that we would reduce a fifth-grade teacher and a sixth-grade teacher in the middle school for next year, and that we would have to plan accordingly in doing notification to all teacher-certified elementary school, for instance, uh, and any other teachers that would be lost would be a different issue. But these would be riffs that we would be doing. So that that's why it's important. If the board is not comfortable with the current um model, you need to say so now, because we need to make plans tomorrow for how we're going to bring recommendations to you in the first meeting or so, in the next meeting that we have, which will not be this board, the new board. So that's an important piece. So based on where we are now, all I'm asking you is, is the board uh all set with the uh reorganization plan that the middle school has brought to you, which the bottom line to me is, we would be losing one fifth-grade teacher and one sixth-grade teacher. Would that be correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I just need the board to indicate to me if that is acceptable.
Well, you're actually gonna have one less class in the fifth grade, one less class in the sixth grade, not necessarily a fifth-grade teacher and a sixth-grade teacher loss. There'll be one less teacher in each class, but we don't know where that's coming from.
There'll be two less teachers between the fifth and sixth grade.
Correct.
I would agree with that.
And let's say ten kids move in over the summer, we'll, we'll look at that.
Well, in the past, historically, if we've gotten to the point where we're outside the numbers that are ratio, numbers that are recommended by the board, we've revisited it, and um we've rehired teachers um in my stay here so that we stay within the board's recommended um numbers.
And the letters have to go up by when?
Well, we have to notify teachers by the fifteenth, but we certainly wanna have, we have.
March?
Of April. But we have to send out uh letters uh on riffing as soon as we are, you know, aware of what we're going to be doing. And then we, not only to the um LEA as a whole, but to the particular units that would be impacted. So for instance, if it were uh fifth and sixth grade, they would be in the unit that are certified, I think it's K through six elementary certifications. If it was seventh and eighth grade, it would be secondary. If it was UAs, it would be district-wide. So within the contract, we have to notify people as soon as we're aware of that.
Right, and that could all change on Tuesday, after Tuesday.
Say that again, please?
That could also change after Tuesday.
Yes, it could.
If Tuesday's voted successful for the.
To more kindergarten teachers.
Well, what would happen then would be the the positions that are open to be filled uh would change. The actual reduction enforced in the middle school would still occur.
Right.
But it would be a question of what openings would be available for people to uh apply for. That would really be the change. The actual reduction would still occur. So for instance, if we had two reductions in the middle school in currently what's being recommended uh between the fifth and sixth grade, those are K through six certifications. So if we had two new kindergarten openings, depending on how things fell out, I mean, you might have some teachers in the uh elementary school who would prefer to teach kindergarten full-time, and that might open up a position in the elementary school. So so those things all have to get juggled. But but we have to know is, the the Ringe Moro School right now is very clear, excuses, I did it again. Um, the GMS is very clear in terms of uh what we're going to have happen. And LMS, if you're agreeable to this proposal, is now very clear as to what we're going to have happen. And then we can plan tomorrow in our meeting uh when we discuss uh recommendations from the principals about teachers as to exactly how that's gonna play out. GMS, 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 GMS.
I don't know if I'm fully comfortable. I'm, I think, I don't know. I still have reservations about fifth grade.
Thinking that could change too if the population changes.
I know, that's the thing.
Yeah, but you gotta, you you, we have to, um, we have to give them direction.
Yep.
You guys can't push it.
No.
You can't push it to the twenty-first.
It doesn't mean it can't be twenty-eighth.
Or twenty-eighth, I mean, you.
Yeah, we do. We have a, I mean, obviously, we can't wait until the last minute, because we've got procedural things to take care of, notifications to roll.
Right, right. No, I absolutely understand.
And and um conversations with the principals to have, so. And then clearly, as as the board chair suggested, the thirteenth, everything's up, and it may change the whole perspective.
I'll make a motion that the uh plan as presented that will uh make a reduction in between the fifth and sixth grade, fifth and sixth grades of two positions be the plan that that's moved forward at this time.
Do eliminate two positions.
Yeah.
No second. Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Motion carries three, one, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
We don't have it, but I know we have public, so, public input?
Yes.
You've been so patient.
Um, I guess the the biggest thing, Robyn Corbial, Ford S. Smith Court, biggest thing I have to say is, I started the computer program at LMS, to me, fifteen years ago, um, and I've watched it grow and develop. I've watched us add classes. I've watched us add computers at the elementary school. Um, and each one of those transitions has offered more and more to our district. Um, in the library, that computer class in fifth grade is important. Um, one of the key reasons it's important is, we've now shifted what we're teaching in sixth and seventh grade so that now we're teaching programming and physical computing. We're not teaching what we were teaching two years ago in that class. I'm not covering the content that I covered two years ago in that class. What we're doing now is totally different, and I think it's phenomenal, and I think it's, you know, leading the way for what other schools are doing in both New Hampshire and Massachusetts as far as what we're doing. So I think it's really good stuff. But we can't forget things like digital citizenship. We're looking at fifth, sixth, and seventh graders. We're looking at handing them Chromebooks next year. There needs to be a class, right, that's teaching them how to use technology and social media and their digital footprint, and making that a positive digital footprint, so that they don't get caught in some of these webs that can be catastrophic to these kids at this age, right? Because if you take one picture and you put it in the wrong place, it can devastate a kid at that age, because they don't have the emotional sense to handle that and to deal with it. It means that they leave the district. It means that, you know, in in a positive note, they leave the district. I mean, in a negative note, it could mean all sorts of things. So there are some really important things as we transition these kids to a one-to-one model that we need to prepare them for. And I'm not saying that you need that library class forever, but I think that you do need to keep in mind that what she's teaching is really important. She's introducing them to new tools that they can use to show what they know. They need to be advocates for their own learning and their own learning style. And that doesn't mean that the classroom teacher says, you need to make an animation to show me U.S. history, right? It means that the child needs to know, I'm a good animator, and goes to the social studies teacher and says, I think I can show you a lot of information by creating this animation. Will you let me do it? And then having that s- that space that they can go into in the library and create that, and the kids have to become animators. It's funny, my newest um training was, is titled Innovators and Makers, because that's what these kids are. They need to come up with this, and they need to be given the freedom and the space to do that. Um, they're, and she helps them utilize these tools to their full potential that we're giving them, because as much training as we give our teachers, they're not going to be a hundred percent when you hand those Chromebooks out day one in September, right? They're gonna need somebody else who's still teaching the kids. Hey, look at this great tool, look at this, look at that, that they can then utilize in that class. tool, look at this, look at that, that they can then utilize in that class. And again, I'm not saying forever, but at least until we transition. It's a big jump to go from nothing to every middle school student from five to eight to have their own Chromebook.
Well, you're making me really nervous now. I think they should be taught at G M S as well. They should be ready to hit the ground running when they get there.
And, and again, what, what I, what I've seen, again.
There's computer at G M S.
There is computers at G M S.
Do they teach digital citizenship and all that stuff?
But it's different for a second grader than it is for a fifth grader than it is for a ninth grader.
In green, so.
It has, and some of it can be taken on in the regular classroom, don't get me wrong. But I think that there needs to be, and I've gone to a couple of the Project Lead the Way, um, um, Project Safeguard and had former students say, where did you learn that in my class? But I don't have that time anymore, cause I'm teaching programming. So when, when it was handed down to fifth grade four or five years ago, she picked up a lot of that curriculum. She's introducing that. I moved to more advanced things, she took over that. So, or whoever's in that position. But I think that we have to remember those are important concepts because kids make mistakes in the middle school. They, they do, they experiment and it's like dropping your kid off in the middle of New York City by themselves when you give them a computer.
I mean, to your point, I, I'm not certain if the determination has been made that day one of fifth grade, that they're gonna get a Chromebook.
Okay, no, whatever, whatever it is, but as we transition in, you know, those are the things that.
I think we know, we know also, it's like, we can't just like, you know, throw a Chromebook at them like.
Right, it, there's gonna take a little bit of time. Um, the other thing is, as far as cutting teachers, and this has nothing to do with me being a U A, it's about class size. I had a child who went through in the class of about a hundred fifty-five kids, twenty-six, twenty-seven kids per class, right? He got a great education, he's in college, he's doing well. Um, I've seen class sizes that are very small. But if you start saying, we're gonna have, you know, five teachers in the sixth grade and we're gonna say that sixteen kids is the class size, every teacher in the district is gonna say, that's great. Litchfield is saying that sixteen kids is the class size that we think is going to give kids the best education. So every class should be sixteen, not picking and choosing an individual grade level because it's convenient. Now, I will agree about fifth grade. I think fifth grade's a transition. They're going from one teacher to seven teachers. They're moving in and out of a building. Sometimes I don't know how they do it as well as they do. As a parent, it's a transition, right? Cause we go from one teacher that we're talking to about all of our subjects to now having to coordinate with seven different teachers. And so I think that, you know, it's an interesting thing to think about and I don't know where you go with it, but it is a transition year. And, you know, is it important to us to say, we want small class sizes at fifth grade? So that we're able to then say, they're gonna have success the next three years in our building because we've set up this. But that's, that's a decision for you to make as a board or the next board to make. Um, but I do think that the class size number is important and it's, and, and same thing, you know, for U As, it's not about whether you cut a U A or don't cut a U A, scheduling all this other stuff. It's what you decide is in the best interest for a class size for kids. Um, and U As in some classes, you can go higher, but like in the class that I'm teaching now, it would be very hard to go high because they're wiring controllers and they need space and they need materials and, you know, it is hard to go up into thirty kids in a class. I don't think I've ever had to go that high. Um, not impossible, but I, I do think it is. Um, and again, I think that they're getting the content is staying the same. It's just who's delivering that content that is changing. And I think at least for next year, we're talking about teachers who are all certified to deliver that content, correct?
Yep.
Right?
Correct.
So it's, we're not, we're not putting any class, any student in a class to receive content with a teacher that's not certified by the state of New Hampshire to teach that content. I think that, that might be it. I think I wanna go home before I get into a car accident, but, um, and I appreciate you're listening. Um, but, but I do think that we need to, uh, the one thing about elementary, I haven't been in there and been as close in the last year or two, but I know there's a lot of testing done in that. And again, I know we're transitioning them, we have more labs and things like that, but less instruction happens when that lab has to be utilized to run for grade levels through N I W A testing and S back testing. So again, it, it's great that we have it and it, and it's a lot harder to teach a second grader the technology skills that they need when you see them one Monday a month or, you know, four Mondays a month. I think to myself, I don't know how I would teach my kids if I only saw them one day a week for ten weeks and I now have to give them a grade based on nine times that I've seen them. That's a, I think, again, I think that's a tougher situation, so having that class at the fifth grade, at least in the short term, until we get everybody up to speed on what those technology skills are, I think it's an important thing that they're starting, we're opening the doors wide open for them with technology and we need to make sure that they're prepared to use it and they have all the skills to use it to the potential that it can be used. Cause giving them a Chromebook and just having them do Word documents and typing, you might as well get a pencil and paper, right? But if they can use all these different apps and they can enhance it, then that's.
Teach more walk.
Do we have an I C T or computer technology curriculum, like K to twelve framework standards, do we?
We do.
Does it need to be updated or?
It does. We just finished it in February before, I think it was a, two years ago from today. And then I went to Project Lead the Way training and I said to the curriculum director at the time, do you want me to teach the curriculum that for the first time in fifteen years, we've got accepted? Or do you want me to teach Project Lead the Way? And she said, definitely teach Project Lead the Way. Let's see what we can do with it. Let's pilot it, let's see what happens. I think it's been phenomenal for the students. I think that, you know, the kind of questions that they're asking and the things that they can produce is amazing. So we've stuck with that.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, in my experience, technology is the hardest to keep up with when it comes to curriculum. As you can imagine, social studies, not so much. You know? Technology is a challenge and particularly where we've been bringing so much the last three or four years.
Well, that's the thing too. I mean, my fourth grader came home yesterday having made an Excel spreadsheet with a chart.
Yep.
Um, and I was blown away, cause I just learned how to do that when I was prepping all the kindergarten stuff. So I couldn't believe he, he.
And that's a perfect example. I used to teach Excel. I don't teach Excel anymore.
Right.
There's just not the time to do that anymore.
Make sure our alignment is K through twelve.
And I think that's a great thing for the new curriculum director. And, and I was interested, is that position gonna be full-time or part-time?
It's the next superintendent's job.
So the superintendent would make that decision. Okay, I was just, that's a community member, I just didn't know.
Just to, to, to kind of nip that conversation in, at the beginning, at this point in time, the intent is to have a full-time curriculum director in the district next year. However, uh, the actual decision around that would be the new superintendent, Dr. Jettie, uh, as he would be the one who'd have to work with the curriculum director. So we'll be working with Dr. Jettie to, um, make those determinations, but we will be advertising and starting that whole process in the next month or so.
So we won't have a curriculum director until after July first?
That is correct. We will have, those, those tasks have been assigned, I think you got an email from me.
I did, absolutely, yep.
And those tasks have been assigned to, uh, Tom and, uh, Scott and.
And you for grants, right?
And I, I put my hand up for the ones that were very simple. And to me, so that we're trying to take care of all of that through the end of the year. We've had conversations just recently today with, uh, the state on, uh, a teacher who was in a, an alternative plan to make sure that the plan was being done correctly. So, um, I, I think we will do fine until the end of the year in terms of keeping the trains on the track. And I think once that, uh, Dr. Jettie takes over and hires a new curriculum director, uh, that we'll be looking at more in what his vision is. And so, uh, we do, at this time, anticipate a full-time curriculum director being on board once Dr. Jettie takes over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Drive safe.
Yeah, I hope it's not too bad.
Seeing how your daughter drives.
I couldn't leave pause.
My wife, my wife did call up and say, it's, it's pretty, pretty slippery out there.
Well, my little one called and said, because you guys ran a little bit later than you, than you meant to, I don't know. But she said, are you okay? Are you stuck in a snowbank? The whole thing's just got started a little bit later than I thought they would, so. I'm only a mile away, so if you see a car pull.
Drive safe.
You can walk.
Litchfield, please, probably give me a ride. Small town, bring me home.
Your daughter was on a golf course the day I picked her up.
That's right, that's right. Yep, coming from that, so we're good.
Bye.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you. I actually just thought of one more thing for non-public.
Well, I'd just like to say, uh, it's been a great year. Nice to be, uh, moving off the table for a while. Hopefully we're good. Um, but just a couple of things, I was hoping that, uh, we would have the calendar, but I saw you guys pulled that. Um, and I know that start date is based on the contract, so, uh, you, as a board, uh, really need to fix the contract where, uh, we either start on the first Monday after sep, after Labor Day and you go to ours, because going to the twenty-fifth of June with four snow days for next year, um, meaning that right now you would be at the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth and realizing that your contract with your teachers ends on June thirtieth. And so that if you had to run into an issue with school or whatever, um, they're not here to teach on July first, um, uh, because they don't need to be back until the end of August. Uh, so you guys need to, you need to fix that aspect of your, um, calendar. It'd also make life a whole lot easier for setting final day and graduation where you can set those days, um, and not be so enthralled with, um, actual days, but, but with hours. And, um, hopefully, um, that's something that the negotiating team this year will work very well on.
Actually, I'm hoping that they're, um, willing to sit down and listen to it, John, cause if you just look at the last three years, we've run into the same thing the last three years, that we're running around trying to decipher when graduation is.
Mm-hmm.
That we're looking at, are we gonna start going to school on Saturdays? It's just, well, you have to get your days in.
I know.
Unfortunately, right now, we're days-based rather than hours. And we've been talking about hours for like three, four years, but I think.
Well, we've actually been talking for eight years, so.
Yeah, well.
I guess it's time to do it.
Yeah.
But it takes, and, and you also need to, to, um, take a look at your, you can't solve the hour time until you start also the starting times of your school. So it's, it's, um, I would encourage the three of you, um, to, really, um, well, Liz, I'm, I'm open up for you. Um, that you guys make it a priority, um, to begin the process of working those things out, because you need to, um, uh, you need to be prepared, um, uh, and have your ducks in a row, because it, it never comes and then, like every, every one of the negotiations as, that I've seen, that I've been part of, all start with, um, no, 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 more money. No, 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 no. And then we get to December and it's, it's like helter-skelter to try to get something done. And, um, and if you're gonna make tough things, then you gotta start meeting in September. And, and I know you gotta wait till the L E A, but, um, maybe that's something that the school board, the next school board can decide, put a bug in the superintendent's ear to put a bug in the president of the L E As' ear and, um, and get the, uh, new superintendent involved in July and start some preliminary conversations to try to get some major changes done that benefit the teachers through more pay and higher pay or whatever. But there, you know, there are things that the district needs and, and I think you guys should try to push those things, so. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I might, um, I, I just wanna, uh, thank, uh, John York for, um, his passion for our children, for his commitment to public schools, for his willingness to step in.